Okay, we're here with city council candidate Marcus Owens. Marcus, it's great to meet you.
Hi.
Thanks for being here. So why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself and your campaign?
Yeah, so hi, thank you guys so much for having me. Good afternoon. Um, something just a little bit about myself. Um, I I'm very passionate about um our community. I believe in my endorsements responses, I kind of included just a little bit about ah, just my work in hospitality and um retail and you know, there's there's um, there's beautiful opportunities for improvement here in Santa Monica and I'm very I'm very passionate about improving and enhancing certain initiatives. Um, particularly when it comes to homelessness. Um, so that's one of the reasons why I'm running is to create a community that is more engaged and safe. Um, but also um inclusive in our practices, uh particularly when it comes to housing. Um. I mean, I'm not the first that's that's aware of it, you know, surely not in in our community. Um, just the need to improve um housing, um improving the funding for affordable housing and um yeah, I I intend to help with those uh with with that, so.
Great, so I wanted to start off with a um basic question for you about um you know, since we're the Democratic Club, of course, uh you wrote in your questionnaire that you're not affiliated with any political party. But I did check and you are actually registered to vote as a Democrat. So I wanted to try to understand the nuance a little bit there. I mean, what do you mean when you say you're not affiliated with any political party, but you are technically registered as a Democrat? So what is the philosophical thinking there? Like, why don't you want to affiliate with the brand of the Democratic Party? And are there particular Democratic Party values that you don't agree with or that you do really agree with? You know, what's your thinking on on the the party branding, so to speak?
Got it. Thank you. Um, yes, very good question, John. So um I believe that um information uh pertains to the last time I voted, which was about a year ago. It was before I ran as, you know, before my campaign for city council currently. Um, reason for that just stance would be to ensure that um when it comes to issues with the community that I'm not coming from a biased standpoint, you know, um, just in our country alone. Sometimes you although being a Democrat or Republican can have its benefits, right, being a part of a political party. However, it can also divide. Um, particularly when it comes to addressing issues and concerns. My main focus is to ensure that the voters know that I'm not coming from a biased standpoint. And I'll also be updating that. That's a great, uh, I'll give my team on that in in regards to finding out a way to update that. I don't believe there's a way to vote as of yet. I could be wrong about that. Um, but I believe you need to affiliate yourself with a political party. So I mean, my family grew up as Democrats, so kind of runs in the blood, but at the same time I support because this there are some things when it comes to getting issues resolved, particularly in Congress and at a state level. Um, where there's a divide and then nothing gets done and then that hurts the community. So that's why my main focus is ensuring that as I'm running for city council, I am looking out for everybody. You know, if it's going to benefit the community, then there's that's where my focus is. I hope that answers your question.
No, totally. Just wanted to get your thoughts on it. I mean, so you can register to vote as what's called declined estate, which means you're not affiliated with any political party, but luckily for you, you, since you are registered as a Democrat, you're eligible to participate in our club's endorsement process, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, hopefully you'll stay as a Democrat. We want to keep you in the party and and uh, you know, keep you engaged with in our process. Um, anyway, let's go on to some more substantive questions and we'll go to Sam first.
Okay.
To meet you, Marcus.
Hi, good afternoon.
Actually, yeah, so I was fascinated by your uh opinion to have a hybrid system for districting like in the vein of Philly and Boston with the at-large and the districts. So what was behind you forming this uh idea for Santa Monica and how do you think that would be able to be implemented?
Great question. I'm sorry, what was your Sam? Sam, great question. Um, yes, so I mean when it comes to city council, I mean, just look at the board currently, no judgment there, no, you know, just from from a mere observation standpoint. How many of those members are currently from a particular area within Santa Monica? Do they fairly represent all areas of Santa Monica? What I envision is you know, seven seats, yes, that big picture would focus on all seven areas. I believe there's seven. Um, however, ideally, it would be nice to have a member that is selected or you know, gets a fair chance to be selected to represent that particular area. So I'm within the downtown Santa Monica area, so like Sixth and Broadway, Ocean, just that immediate area. I'm not quite sure if any of the members on that on our current city council represents this community. Um, you know, so the focus there would be to increase representation in each community by allowing some sort of system, um, like a hybrid system. Um, with that, again, would be um designated members that are like selected, I would say perhaps like a forum. Um, I believe there are different associations for each um. I don't believe there's one for downtown uh downtown center, but there's, you know, Pico, there's Wilt uh Worcester, Montana. There's uh Ocean, that you know, so there's different associations. What I envision is for them to select one member. And then out of each neighborhood within Santa Monica, one member selected each. And then, you know, everyone gets to vote for, you know, all of them, but there's some sort of process like a hybrid system to where although they represent that particular community and and um, you know, association, they also represent the total sum of Santa Monica, obviously, but they're they get to bring a, you know, refreshing and um accurate representation to that particular community. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that definitely clears it up. Thanks so much.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Yeah, sure. Great question.
Just piggybacking off that really quick, do you think that it would be good to have a directly elected mayor to go along with that system? Or do you think it, because the way it works now is the council chooses who the mayor is. So just thinking about how you're talking about restructuring that, do you think that would be beneficial or or?
Um. Could you repeat that question? I feel like I got a gist of what you're saying, but I want to be sure.
Uh, so so right now we have seven council members and once they get sworn in, they choose amongst themselves who will be acting as the mayor. So some people are talking about a different idea, which is you have a separately elected mayor who has certain responsibilities, like say the city of Los Angeles, where Mayor Bass is her own office and the city council is its own office that has a uh city council president.
That is the first I'm hearing of this. Um. You know, I can't really give an answer to that right now. I would love to research that further, but um ideally, I mean, the mayor represents um the entire some of the community of all of Santa Monica, right? Um, so you know, there could be benefits there in having, you know, fair representation to have, you know, but what I would like to review the cost on that, you know, um. Are you particularly like having multiple mayors or you know, I I lack I lack depth with that because it's the first I'm hearing of it. So you know, I can only yeah, speculate.
Totally understandable, yeah. Okay, well, we take take a look into it. Maybe it'll come up
Okay.
at our debate or something. We'll uh, we'll give you some time.
Okay, um, real quick question. So what was the um, the overall, you know, uh synopsis on that? What what was the goal?
Well, the question I was asking was whether or not you'd be interested to have a directly elected mayor as opposed to right now where the council has chooses its own mayor, which is the person who chairs the meetings and otherwise is largely a symbolic position.
How would that process look exactly? Um, would it, I mean, so each member gets voted in, correct? And then there's a additional process to where?
Yeah, so right now, I mean, maybe we can have a separate conversation about it, but but uh, right now they get elected and then they choose who the mayor is. That's how the system works right now.
I've got that, yeah.
So what we're talking about here is there would have to be a vote of the of the people that would have a charter amendment to the city that would say we're establishing a brand new position, which is a directly elected mayor. And then there'd be an election just like LA elected between Karen Bass and Rick Caruso. Santa Monica could have a a separate election where
Okay.
for city council, but it's for the mayor of the city.
Yes, I support that. Um, sorry, I I think I it's hard to understand the uh, it was hard for me to understand the question, but thanks for asking, yeah.
It's a complicated issue. It's a complicated issue. There's not a clear answer, so that's why I was interested in your thoughts.
Yeah, um, absolutely. To to answer, yes, absolutely. I would um totally support that. Um, just because I mean, it only makes sense. Our community, um, you know, should decide on who's who's representing and who's heading the, you know, so um I'm for it, yes.
Okay, great. Uh, let's go to Lynn.
Um, hi, Marcus.
Hi.
I noticed that on your questionnaire, you said in a general way that you support harm reduction programs and advocate for integrated services and my question is, do you support specifically the needle exchange program of LA County?
I I would say this, um. It's a very um controversial topic in a way. Um, just in recent events, um particularly with the mayor's stance. Um, and I I do agree, um. Although we should support clean needles, I think it's very important for clean needles. Otherwise, I mean we know the end results if there are dirty needles and, you know, also including diseases and things of that nature that would also increase the harm to the community. Um, so I encourage, yeah, I I I would support clean needles, however, um. The way in which it's done should could possibly be expanded on and um reexamined. Um, I believe the mayor's stance is to uh have a designated area that is particularly away from schools, parks, anywhere where children are involved, you know, in regards to exchange for that program. Um. I mean, ideally, I feel like that should be done at like a community center or somewhere where it's safe, not out and freely on the public, you know, um, just to encourage, you know, safety, education and um. Yeah, overall, just, you know, community trust.
So you don't really support the LA County the way they have it set up.
Um, how do they have it set up? Because uh currently in Santa Monica, um, that's the only one I currently know. Um, in regards to needles and I believe in regards to like having um food services and things like that. Uh, there's currently Reed Park, um, where those services are provided. Um, but again, back to the mayor's stance in regards to, I believe, at least food. Um, you know, that it should be done in a way that is safe for the community and, you know, um. Yeah, it's uh it could be improved, to say the least.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks. Let's go to Isabel next.
There, you have to hit the unmute. Okay.
Hello.
Hey, Marcus, wait a minute. All right. Uh, yeah, thanks for being here. So uh
Pleasure.
Uh, you put on your questionnaire, which I think most, you know, most if not almost agree, top issues of homelessness and affordable housing in Santa Monica. Um, so I'll 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 ask about affordability. Uh, we know that the rents and the prices of homes here are unaffordable for most people. Um, those of us who have lived here for decades, you know, our adult kids. You know, many of them can't afford to live here. Middle to lower income people are priced out. Uh, what would be some of your top ideas of how we could increase the affordable housing in Santa Monica?
Great question. Oh, my God, I love this question. Um. Yes, so in regards to that, um. First things first, I mean, um. I really want to stay on topic here, but it's um. Yeah, first things first, there needs to be space, right? So um, in regards to affordable housing, that we're coming down a shortage of space. Um, what my team and I are currently reviewing is the Santa Monica Airport. Um, I know the community has an idea for a a great park. Um. However, just with the, you know, increase of rent and with the lack of affordable housing, that would be a great opportunity for the community to create some sort of transitional, uh, not transitional, sorry. A transit focused affordable housing complex there, not in the entire space, because I believe it's 200 acres. I mean, that's a lot of space. Um, but to make it an entire park, um. Yeah, I'm not sure. So um, I would just highly I would say obviously we need space. So figuring out where space is and also we need funding. There is um, I believe a very depleted fund in Santa Monica just due to re- um, recent events in the past, you know, over the past years, um regarding, you know, budget within Santa Monica and um. Yeah, so we need funding. So my main focus right now, like as of today, is figuring out how to do that. Um, so that includes working with nonprofits, that includes working with um tech companies, that includes working with anybody that is willing to not only um, you know, fund Santa Monica, but fund LA County because we can't just focus on our community if we are to increase, you know, overall, um, you know. I would just say I'm taking a regional stance on that, um, in order to, you know, to echo the um efforts from San Francisco and the Bay Area. Um, the way that they currently have it set up, I believe um Facebook kicked in around 150 million and Google, no, they kicked in a billion and I believe Google kicked in 150 million. So that helps out the community greatly and then within each community or city within, you know, San Francisco. Um, they all benefit from that in in order to increase affordable housing. Um, so that's one way, um, is to get funding. The other way is to increase um federal grants and, you know, um. Policies to increase um affordable housing within our communities. Um, another great initiative that we're, our team is looking into is some sort of vacancy tax. Um, I have this property right here next to my apartment that has been, I mean, I'm going to say since 2020, it's been sitting there at least until this project over here on Lincoln and Broadway got developed and um. Yeah, until then, it was just an empty space. You know, you had individuals experiencing homelessness, utilizing the space for, you know, whatever needs they saw fit. And um, you know, there was corrosion and, you know, other issues, uh environmental issues. So um, you know, that's another great way to increase funding. I think the main focus that I'm focused on right now is funding. You know, um, I know one thing, the city budget is very it it's stale. So in order to increase, you know, to to amend that, we would need to find proactive ways to increase funding that is, you know, equitable and, you know, sustainable. So um, I hope that answers your question.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. And let's go to Mike.
Hey, Marcus. So some of us have been working for quite a while to create funding for affordable housing in our schools and our community. Yes. Those measures were called Measure GS. I want to talk to you about each of them. So I want to talk to you first about the first one, which was a sales tax increase. And you're right, our current city council has taken 36 and a half million dollars away from the Housing Trust Fund um for other purposes, when the voters said that money was supposed to go to affordable housing. There's talk about doing, taking more away. So what are your views on that if you're on city council?
Um. Great question. Great question. Um, in regards to measure um GS, I um. I believe that with anything, I it there needs, it needs to be researched, you know, and it needs to be voted on with the community and have everyone's input involved. Um. Just in regards to affordable housing, I think that it's a great way to increase housing. Isn't it absolute way? I doubt it, but you know, it is, it it is an effort. So I I commend the city for, you know, coming together and, you know, approving that measure, putting that measure together and, you know. When it comes to that, I believe there needs to be some sort of governance on implementation of that to ensure, I mean, just when it comes to oh, God, um. When it comes to LA County and, you know, back in, what was it, 2014, we signed, we we all agreed to measure um HHH, right? Let's put a billion dollars and get mental health services and things of that nature. And what have you seen so far? You know, um, not to say or discredit their efforts at work, but I would just encourage that, you know, there needs to be teams that are selected by the community that are engaged and, you know, a part of the decision making when it comes to how that money is spent. I hope that answers your question.
Sure. And now I want to talk to you about 2022 Measure GS. So that's a transfer tax measure, which actually does have a citizen advisory board attached to it. Um, but you indicated on your questionnaire that you support um efforts to exempt all multifamily housing from that. So I have two questions for you. Can you explain to me how you think that exempting existing housing, such as, for example, if Douglas Emmett were to sell the shores, which has been in our community for about 30 years? Um, that billionaire developer, why they shouldn't have to contribute anything and how that has anything to do with encouraging multifamily housing development in our community? And then my second question is, where are you going to get the money that you're not going to get through that change?
Yes, so um. Great question. Um, in regards to just my stance, my overall stance on that, um. I would say that it's very challenging to get housing built within Santa Monica, right? Um, it's it's very hard to um to create affordable housing. It's 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 almost an impossible task. It can be done, but it is, it is quite rigorous in as far as processes go, as far as, you know, development, cost of development, you know, funding, all of it. It's it's a lot, it's a lot. And, you know, I would believe, I believe that by exempting mixed use um fam uh developments within um, within that policy, that that would increase um more developments and to also encourage some sort of trust and um you know, um overall improvement within that area. Um, there there needs to be more affordable housing housing that's made and um, when it comes to mixed use developments, um. They play a big part in that, um particularly when it comes to um you know, business in Santa Monica, uh, most of these developments are now um thankfully being made into um you know, multiple stories, retail underneath, possibly even community centers and then parking. There's so um many spaces within Santa Monica that are currently already developed on that could be reexamined, um particularly when it comes to meeting our housing quotas and things of that nature. Um, and then back to to answer your second question, um. I would say we can subsidize, you know, um that initiative from Measure to um by gaining support from either nonprofits, uh federal and state grants and also any sort of, you know, philanthropic or, you know, tech for good company of that nature. Um. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Let's go to Patricia.
Okay, yeah. Hi, it's really good to see you and hear you this time. I missed you in your last campaign and
Oh.
I I I do have a a a series of of really short answer questions that I'd like to ask you. And one, what is your current occupation?
My current occupation is ensuring that this campaign and the success of community is is paramount. So currently, um, that's my focus.
So you're getting paid to run?
Hmm, currently, no.
Okay, okay. Um, and do you have an employer?
Um. I would like to kindly defer to the next question, um, just because my main focus and running for city council is putting the focus on the community. Um, not particularly um what I'm currently doing. I would say that in my, in the past, I have participated in retail, customer service and the entertainment industry. As you know, that can be very challenging, so um.
See, well, I I just assumed you were a holistic practitioner of some sort, so um.
Oh, okay. Um, I do.
So that's a surprise answer to me.
Yeah, I do also, um, I do also, um on a volunteer basis. This is why the the question is kind of um just in my observation, um. It's uh, it's missing the uh, the the specificity, um, which is what I was looking for, you know, so thank you for clarifying that. Yes, um, so I'm currently, um, you know, off and on participating in insight seminars. Um, it is a personal development organization that's globally known. And um there we focus on um improving the lives of adults and youth within the community. Um, so yes, that is also a part of one of my endeavors.
Okay, and I have, I have, I have a a couple more. Who is, you talk about your team a lot. Who is your team?
Um, so I'm, so on my um, on my LinkedIn, um, there you will see uh current members that are a part of the team. Um, if you go to the people selection uh section for my LinkedIn, um, all of that's included on my my flow code page. Um, so feel free to peruse that at your your leisure. And then, um, yeah, that should, that should help out, at least find out, you know. So far, we have Jimmy, Sarah, um. We have Channing and Evan.
Okay, and then um are, I I can see that you're raising consciousness, but are you also going to raise money?
As far as my campaign goes?
Yes.
As of right now, that's to be determined. Um, again, just in regards to uh what I placed into my um candidacy or my endorsement responses, um. I think that by collaborating with others, by built fostering partnerships, relationships, that, you know, you don't particularly need money.
Um, it's hard to get a message out without having at least some money.
I must disagree.
Okay.
I must disagree.
And then, um, and this is my last one, is that that typically when someone runs for city council, um, they've been a participant in a city board or commission and um and under, uh, you know, have have worked with the nuances of how to conduct the public's business. And I didn't see any of that on your questionnaire. Do you have any any history with, for example, the Brown Act or conducting public business?
Could you specify the question? Um.
Have you, have you ever worked on a Brown Act committee?
No.
Okay, have you, have you thought about getting onto one of the city's boards or commissions? Have you ever applied for one of those? Okay, ha- have you, have you thought about getting onto one of the city's boards or commissions? Have you ever applied for one of those?
I I consider it, yes, but, um, unfortunately, it can be quite difficult to join a board. Um, without the approval of, you know, members. So I'm not quite sure how to do that, um, without their support. So, um, but yeah, I I would be very interested if granted, if the opportunity presented itself. Um, but again, I'm young, I'm, you know, African American, so.
Well, I, no, no, I recommend it because you have a lot to offer and it might make sense to start. At at something other than what's considered the top position is is to get into, yeah, I don't know. Into.
Thank you. It's okay.
To into, um, uh, just sort of picking up the nuances of a public body, that's all.
I'm I'm aware of nuances. Um, you know, um, I actually have relatives that work in on a state and local level and, you know. I I'm very well versed when it comes to dealing with anything from a corporate level to a government level. I'm I'm very well versed in that in that regard. That's one of the reasons why I'm running for city council.
Okay, I appreciate that. I wish I could had seen a little more of that part in your in your questionnaire, but thank you. Have a good run. And we'll see you again, I'm sure.
Okay.
Thanks. Uh, let's go to Keith.
Uh, hi, Marcus.
Hello, Keith, how are you?
Good, things are good.
Good.
So, um, on a, on your questionnaire, um, you mentioned that you would expand. Uh, on the following question personally. And that question was, what role do you believe the Santa Monica Democratic Club should have in our city?
Yes, um, thank you, Keith. Um. I believe at the end of the day, whether it fits, you know, no matter the political party, I believe at the end of the day. The focus should be encouraging voters to vote, educating voters on anything from who the candidates are. To what policies are, what they mean, and also to, you know. Again, just to get people to vote, you know, um, so within that, um, and and obviously support. Um, issues and measures as far as, you know, affordable housing and whatever else the community is actually needing, right? Um. Just in personal experience, um, when it comes to, um, political parties, again, just back to my my prior statement. Um, there could be a divide just because, you know, um, oh, I'm a part of this group or this gang or this affiliation. That I'm not able to help, or I'm not able to communicate with you, or I'm not able to, you know. So not to say that that is the case here, but what I'm saying is I believe, you know, that there is great opportunity. For this organization to reach out and, you know, collaborate with other organizations. And collaborate with community members that are not members. Um, one thing I find that's very challenging is that, you know, in order to, um, get support. You need to be some sort of member, you know, you need to be, you need to pay either eighty dollars a year or a month or whatever the fee is. To be a part of the organization or community, although I understand, um, that there are, you know, reasons for that cost. I would just encourage, you know, like, when it comes to, um, I love the way that insight seminars is set up. Basically, you will not not go to a seminar because of money, right? So, you know, there's, there's what you call, um, what do you call it? Uh, like a support system. To where if you don't have it, we will find a way to get you a part of this community. And I would like to see that when it comes to, you know, Santa Monica Democratic Club to, I don't know if there's a Republican, Republican club. Or Greenpeace Party Club or whatever other club there is in Santa Monica. I would like for people to be a part of that membership without the cost of money. I think that's my, you know. Initial stance when it comes to that is that, you know, people can feel excluded because they're dealing with the high cost of rent. They're dealing with, you know, uh, say if they have a dog or they have a child. So, you know, I don't need to explain to you what it means to live in LA. But adding that to your already expanded budget, but you also want to participate in the community. It increases, in a sense, some sort of, well, the hell with it. I won't be a part of it then, you know. So to drive inclusion and some sort of, you know. Overall engagement, especially when it comes to our younger voters, is to find some sort of system or program to include everybody. Um, and then also, you know, I collaborate with anyone that's willing to collaborate, you know. Um, as long as they're not harming harming our planet, as long as they're not harming our environment or community members, I'm all for it. Um, and also on a non, like, I I can't be bought. I I don't, I don't believe in that, you know. Um, many politicians get into this field and then they're bought out. They have a particular stance and then they don't vote on something that the community absolutely needs because they've been bought out. So, and whether that's from a political party or an organization or company, you know, so. Just in regards to that, you know, not to say that that's what's happening here, um. I'm just very passionate about this community and, you know, I would love the opportunity to work with you guys and find out ways to where we can increase. Safety. Inclusion. And engagements. Thank you.
Appreciate that response, uh, to Heat's question. And just to clarify, the Santa Monica Democratic Club, uh. Does have a reduced, uh, month, um, reduced, uh, prices for hardship, student seniors. And then we also allow for anyone who, for any reason, that whether they want to disclose it or not. If if they need the fee to be completely waived to become a member, we can do that as well. So, we definitely agree. I mean, we we take inclusion very seriously at our club. And we always want to make sure that we can include as many people who want to be part of our process as possible.
That's why I said, you know, not to say that that's the case here, it's just, that's more so a general generalized statement. But yes, thank you, John. Appreciate it.
Totally. Well, it was really great getting to know you in this interview and we look forward to seeing you, uh, at next week's debate. And, uh, you know, getting to see you, you go through it during the rest of the campaign. So good luck with the campaign. Patricia has, looks like another comment.
I just want to say, our meetings are open. You can start coming to all of our meetings with, you know, with or without becoming a member. And you should get on our mailing list and see, you know, what programs we are offering. I think you might enjoy them.
Yeah, I think you just signed up for the mailing list, right? So we'll, uh, we should, you should come on Wednesday. We're going to have the debate of the rent control board, the school board and the college boards. You can come see a meeting. Um, but yeah, we meet pretty much every month.
Um, I I won't be there unfortunately, um, but my my team is on it, um, so they will report back to me. But I will be aware of it. Thank you.
Okay, we'll see you with for the council debate and thanks a lot, Marcus. Appreciate you coming by.
I appreciate it. Thank you all. Um, I think you guys are doing tremendous work within the community. And, you know, I just want to thank every last one of you for just being a part of making change for, you know, not only our community. But for our neighboring communities as well. I think it's very, very honorable and, uh, you know, commendable. So thank you.
Great, thank you.